Well, if you need some order, please rise for the line of allegiance.
Air three, color four, march. Other guard, halt. Halt. Ready, cut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of our Constitution that we have, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms, oath, four, march. Four, march.
Thank you.
Joseph Rippon.
President.
Rachel Toleski.
Here.
Kate Canett.
Yes.
Gladys Cooper here. Richard Tannell.
Here.
Patrick Johnson. Patrick Carrick.
Here.
David Matrina.
Here.
Emmanuel Palmer.
Here.
Rob Pettifesh.
President.
Amos Belina.
Here.
We have all here. Yes.
No.
Okay. Moving on to public participation, the board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers, please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations or programs that concern them. The board will not permit any expression of personal complaints or defensor comments about the board of education personnel and students or against any person connected with the Danbury Public School system. With that said, the first person signed up is Wendell Johnson. Would you like to have a seat?
Good evening. My name is Wendell Johnson. I'm a resident of Danbury. My address is 16 Southview Avenue here in Danbury. I've been a resident of Danbury for 54 years. I have, my wife is now deceased. We were married for 51 years. She actually was a member of the city council for four years. And we have two wonderful daughters who attended Danbury Public Schools. My occupation is I am an executive recruiter. I have offices in New York City, Stanford, Connecticut, as well as Danbury, Connecticut. I have recruited individuals on a global basis at the senior level for corporations around the world, primarily at the $500,000 and above level salary plus compensation. So as a result of that, I have been keenly aware of exactly what successful formula is for an individual to have in order to be successful in the corporate world. And consequently, 36 years ago, I formulated, along with my wife, a nonprofit organization that was more or less give high school students an opportunity to take advantages of some of the emerging careers that are available in the corporate world. And consequently, we opened up an organization known as the Annual Multicultural Business Youth Educational Services Department. Our initial programs were held at Western Connecticut State University, followed by Danbury High School, and then we later moved on to Westchester. We were in Westchester for four years, then we moved on to the University of Connecticut Stamford Branch. It had just opened. It was a former Bloomingdale's department store. And consequently, we developed a partnership with the University of Connecticut, and we've been there since 2001. Basically, over the years, we've had an opportunity to invite Danbury High School students to our program to a strong degree. And over the years, unfortunately, there has been a diminishment enrollment. All of our programs are offered free of charge. We have partnerships with some of the major universities around the world. And I'm delighted to say that over the past 36 years, 14,000 students have enrolled in our program. Of the 14,000, the majority of them have received scholarships to top-tier universities, directly to top-tier universities. So I'm here tonight basically to provide an overview of what our program is all about. And as I have said in my emails to each member of the board, we welcome the opportunity of having you to visit our next conference, which will be held at the University of Connecticut Stamford Campus on November 9th. Because I think that would provide you an opportunity to see firsthand what our program has to offer and the sort of support we're getting from other school districts in Fairfield County as well as Westchester County. Thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to seeing you there on the night. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. There's nobody else that's signed up for public participation, but is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak?
Everybody looks so excited.
Consent calendar.
I move that forth education, please add some consent calendar. Exhibit 128, add recommend. 128 through 130.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pedro Pescara. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Motion carries. Oui, Representative, South Street School, why can't you come up? Woo! You'll be your crowd.
I just want them to stand up. Good evening, everyone. We need Dr. Pescara. I like it being four members and admin council. Thank you for this opportunity. Tonight was rough, not too many wanted to come out. Something about a game going on between the Patriots and the Giants. Later on, I might, I already know who's gonna win, right? But I want to thank my colleagues here behind them. I want them to please stand up and to introduce themselves to you.
First, I'm Michael Mosca. I'm the music teacher doing general music, band strings and chorus at South Street. It's my first year teaching general, so.
I'm Craig Clay. I'm the fifth grade writing teacher at South Street School.
I'm Fernando Olivera. I'm a fourth grade political teacher and my fourth year at South Street. I'm Jaclyn DeSill, I'm a parent at South Street School. Oui.
Thank you.
Do you want them to sit up here? Do you want some?
No.
Would you prefer?
So they're wonderful that they came to support tonight. And back there is Mr. Gevara, who always tags along as well. So for those of you who don't know me, I am Carmen Bardas Gevara, and principal of South Street, and I'm starting my third year in South Street. I'm very honored and pleased to be here tonight, and even more so to be part of that wonderful school. And I'm just gonna give you some glimpse tonight of the wonderful things that we've done at South Street. This month, we kind of started doing something at South Street this year, actually. We started celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And all of the classrooms had to choose a Hispanic influential person, Hispanic American, and we found it very helpful and very motivating for our students. And this one that you see here is our third grade classroom. They each chose an influential woman. And as you can see, they learned more about each one of them than they are displaying it in their bulletin boards. That is, one of our art teachers put that together as part of our bulletin board. And it's just celebrating part of our history and even more so part of our Hispanic heritage and how it has influenced our country. Someone decorated their doors. And this is one of my favorite.
That is so cute.
My first graders have learned about her. And if you go and ask them, they'll give you words like, oh, she raised, she raises. It's really exciting. And then today with the staff, I could not conclude mine of my students, but we had a nice, well, better way to conclude it, hold on, I'm afraid, with some food, so I hope all of you ate already because we had some really, I'm not sure, we had some really typical Hispanic food in the school today with the staff. We've done quite a lot of things. And again, October's not the best time. We're still just kicking off our school year, but some of the things incorporated that we did last year, we had a kindness day. And that's just us pretending to do the Wildcat Roar, which is our mascot. We did our walk to school event. Ms. Casimiro was there. We celebrated Black History Month, and we had some very important people coming into our students, reading wonderful books. Some familiar places there. And I think one of the highlights this year, and I don't know if anybody behind me would like to act to it, is, was back in June, we did our STEM fair. We had over 20 Danbury companies come and organize this wonderful event just for South Street. Part of Rogers Park Kids' School, went just a few of them. It was mainly for South Street, and they just had STEM activities for all of the students. We walked there, it was right at the War Memorial, which you know is right across South Street, very close to us, and it was so well organized. It was amazing. The kids had a wonderful time, and the volunteers from the various companies had an even better time. And what my kids learned was amazing. I hope we do it again this year. It was really fabulous. And that was one of our highlights last year. We also do a lot of things for our parents to come and to see the wonderful work that we do. And one of the things we did last year was also our art and music show. And I've already told Ms. Mosca we have to do it again this year. We just incorporated art and music and gave that experience of walking through a gallery and looking at the artwork. And by the way, the artwork behind you, this really happens to be South Street. I don't know if that was a coincidence, but it's wonderful. And we have two wonderful art teachers, and they do an amazing work with our students. And, you know, that's the invitation that went out to the parents. We also do, of course, like everyone, our parent-teacher conferences, and we have a great turnout. As you can see, I have the teacher. Our goal is always 100%, and we've just almost made it. And we do that every year. We've been doing that, which is great. And we offer different opportunities for the parents. They don't have to come in. It could be a phone call, it could be a phone conference, any way that we can get them to participate, to be more involved. Other curriculums, other things that we've done as part of our parent nights is our curriculum nights per grade. We have, we're having great turnout in our PTO nights. Of course, we wanted to be better, but we're getting better at that. Last year, we had some great presentations from outside communities that the district supported us with that. We had the Choose Love Movement. We had the Food Pantry. We had Math STEM Nights. We have writing celebrations. And I'm hoping to incorporate this year a breakfast with the principal. It'll be helpful. Oh, too bad you can't see this, but just to give you an idea of all the activities that we do for our parents, I had to organize everything that we did the last two months. It was more for myself, but I actually sent it out to the parents because so much was happening those last two months. And everything that's purple was a family involvement night. And that's starting up here as of May 21. So a lot of activities, a lot of events, everything that's purple was a family event. So we do a lot, and we have a wonderful community that is very supportive in our school. One of the things that I set a goal for myself was, you know, looking and assessing the needs of our school and our parents. How can I support my parents at home with the homework? That's always a struggle. There's a language barrier. There's so many barriers that my parents have when wanting to help their child at home. And so one of the things that I heard about was Mobi, Mobi-Mat. And I heard wonderful things about it, and this is just a screenshot to give you an idea. And I have gotten very positive feedback from my parents because it's a way of my students to practice those foundational skills that are so necessary. And it's also very easy for the parents because they just have to make sure the kids get online. You can do it on the phone, you can do it anywhere, and it rebuilds the foundations on our kids. It has math, it has fluency, it has numbers, it has reading, it has writing, it has everything, science, social studies. And the parents have really given me positive feedback. And one of the things that I set out to do this year, because this license lasts actually a whole year, not a school year, we pay for an entire 12 months, so the kids had access to their Mobi-Mat over the summer. And we know when we talk, you know, in our admin council meetings, how that summer slide is huge. And I'm trying to get, you know, summer is hard, I got, you know, but more and more kids came back saying we did Mobi-Mat over the summer. So I'm hoping that this summer, it becomes more and more of a routine. And I definitely know the kids love it, and our parents find it very convenient because it's something that they can do. So talking a little bit about curriculum, one of the great successes in South Street has been the implementation of Imagine Learning. It is a program, it's a computerized program, and it is particularly used in kindergarten. And if you can see there, those are my three kindergarten classes. And this is the beginning, right? And then this is the middle of the school year, and this is how we ended. And the blue obviously means at or above grade level benchmark. And where we started to where we ended is pretty, pretty spectacular. And it's just another instructional support tool for our students and for our teachers. By breaking down into numbers, you see how the kids in South Street come in in kindergarten. This is one class that came at, only 46% of the kids came above at the beginning of the school year, and we ended with 100% of our students at or above grade level. The second class, the kids started with only 10% of my kindergarten kids with the basic foundational skills, and we ended at 95% at or above. And the last class, 25% of the students were at or above, and we ended at 95% or above. So that is pretty impressive. And obviously, that's not the end-all, be-all, but it's an additional support for our students and for our staff. We do it during our wind block, so it's not hard, it's not interrupting our core instruction. It's specifically used in kindergarten for our 30-minute wind block. You should see those little ones at the beginning, they don't even know how to open their computer. By now, they're little pros. They know their way, they know where their way around a computer.
Do you want to mention what program is described to get multi-level? The Imaginary?
It was geared, correct. It was, it's very language-based. It's to create, it's to give our kids more of that language and that vocabulary. And I'm only giving you a brief synopsis again of the data. If I break it down even more, it tells me how much they grow orally with their oral language, with their vocabulary, which is what we want. Because a lot of our students, we find, not only do they not come with the language skills in English, but many of them don't even have the basic foundational skills in their own native language. And as we know, when you're learning a new language, the best way is to have a foundational primary language and then transfer that into a new language that you are trying to learn. And so my kids struggle because they don't have either. They're trying to find which one's gonna be their main language. And this is just another way to look at it. This is where we started at the beginning of the school year with Imagine Learning. And you see the big amount of kids that were at or below, and this is where we ended at the end of last year. Which is pretty impressive. And of course, this smarter balance. One of the models that we have implemented in South Street, we're going, I believe, in our fourth year, Mr. Fable? Are departmentalized classrooms in the fourth and fifth grade. We really had it mainly in the fourth grade. Last year, we really had a good program in both fourth and fifth grade. And really, departmentalized classrooms is a model like in the middle school where the kids switch classrooms. In South Street, we have a reading teacher, a writing teacher, and a math teacher. And each class has a 70-minute block of instructional time. So the kids, we have three classes, and the kids switch every 70 minutes. And they do have a home room. And we have seen great success in South Street with that model. And this is one of our cohorts. You see that this is the, my current sixth, the current kid that moved, the ones that graduated and went on to middle school. These were their results in, let's say, in math. In 2017, in math, I had 23% at or above grade level. In 2018, am I saying that right? Is that right? Okay, 2018, we had 30% of that same class, this is by cohort, at at or above grade level. And this year, this spring, that grade graduated and moved on to the middle school with a 41% at or above grade level in math. I think that's spectacular. Look at the growth that we made with that same class moving along, and that's what we want, right? That's what closes achievement gap. This is the same class for reading. Even more impressive. We started in 2017 with this class in third grade at 22% at or above. In 2018, we moved up in ELA to 30% at or above. And that class finished with 56% at or above grade level. That is, that's impressive. This is the, my current fifth grade class. They started in third grade at 31% in math, at or above grade level. And last year, they, in fourth grade, we had 52%. So I'm excited to see where we take these guys this year in fifth grade. And then this is the ELA. We had 31% for ELA at or above, and we finished with 49% again. If I go back and look at what these teachers did last year with that class that started out lower, I think they should come up pretty high this year. So we've been working hard. We have many challenges still that we face, but we are a very welcoming school. We're a wonderful, small community. We're very united, we're very committed. We love our school, we love our kids, we love our families. And even though we have a lot of work to do, we're excited to where we're headed. And we thank you for your support. I told Dr. Southie, do we hear the building? So we decided for the agenda. But thank you, thank you, everyone.
One question before you go. With the departmentalization, do you also do the looping of the teachers?
No.
No, you don't?
Actually.
One year.
We did it one year.
Okay, just curious.
Yes.
Okay, so no more?
And we actually, and that was this year.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We have student representatives this evening. Would you like to start by introducing yourselves?
Do you have to turn this on?
Sorry, this is not answering as well.
Press that button. Back button.
Sorry, I will eventually get ahead of you. But, so, good evening. I'm Claire, BOG vice president.
I'm Larissa Casa. I'm president of Cambridge. And BOG.
I'm Tana Suzo, I represent Aces.
So, good evening. This month, we already started off to, we started, we start with many students participating with our Spirit Week. On Friday, Glacial Spirit Week, which was our school spirit day, which is orange and blue, we had base painting during lunch. And we also had a dunk tank this year, which we raised money for Special Olympics. It was a dollar throw. Our football team also won the homecoming game against West Hill.
What was the score?
Forty-two to zero.
What was the score?
Forty-two to zero, straight good game.
It doesn't hang over, it's going to grow.
The morning after was a high school reunion for the class of 94 and the class of 68. The BOG was giving tours of the school. At night was our homecoming dance, which was a success. Theme was A Night in New York, and we had around 800 students attend. It was a pretty great outcome.
Our sports teams have been doing spectacular, too. The varsity boys soccer has been undefeated until one of the games, which was Fairfield Ward, and then they lost by one point, but they will come back from it. And then our girls field hockey team tied on their game against Tremble 1-1. And our XC and track and field teams also had three wins in 14-1 regular season. And the girls volleyball team will be serving others to help block out cancer in support of Anne's place tomorrow, the 11. And that's going to be for their Pink Knight game at 4:30 PM. And PSATs will be October 16th for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, while seniors will be taking their annual class picture out on the field. And then for the seniors as well, Senior Fest will be October 18th, and with many activities planned by their class president.
Freshman elections this year will be held on October 25th. It gives our freshmen an opportunity to get more responsibility, and they get to choose peers to serve as officers for their grade. The annual club fair will also be held this year on October 29th. We have many new clubs this year, and it's an opportunity for students at DHS to get more involved in the school community.
And for Veterans Day, the BOG is planning to reach out to some veterans so that they can come to our school and just connect with students and also share their stories. So that way, students can just kind of grasp the reality of what they do and also be more appreciative of the people out in service for us. And that's all for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, when is the college night? Did I miss that? Did you have a?
The college night, I'm, I'm, we should, it's next week, with this GASSA.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. I gotta read everything John wrote before I get into trouble. So, good evening, everyone. We need to rely on you to represent the OTC Center. We have some great opportunities for students and staff that I'd like to share with you. On October 2nd, Caio Chacola and Tiffany Vasallo took 32 students on a seven-mile hike along the Appalachian Trail in Kent, Connecticut. On October 4th, two of A's students, including myself, participated in a photo shoot with Brian McCurley, who is our new ceramics teacher, and Dr. Lomas from West Con to celebrate a grant that resulted in A's receiving a kill in our first ever sunrise class. On October 15th, Raam Odhu will take six, eight students to the Stars Workshop. On October 16th, all ninth, 10, and 11 graders will participate in the PSATs at Aces, which is overseen by our guidance counselor, Diana DiNardo. On October 22nd, Full Sail University will visit A's to run workshops with students in filmmaking, game design, entertainment business workshop, and sports media. The student opportunity was coordinated by Patrick Cole. Lastly, October 23rd, Daniela Esposito and Diana DiNardo will take 10 students on a three-mile portrait hike at Deep Rock in Washington, Connecticut. I'd like to thank the board, cabinet members, and the community for your continued support of our Aces program, and look forward to sharing the experiences of our Aces family throughout the year. In America, always be above the thing, God above everyone. Thank you.
Dr. Salvi, it's Monday, October 21st, at the Danbury Fair Mall from 5:30 to 8:30. And then also note, the following Monday, the 28th, is the freshman forum, which will be at Danbury High School.
And Amayella, you have something to add?
I do. I just want to say something on my behalf of these three ladies, that when I was at Danbury High School, I started, I graduated 2001, I ran for the UOG in Watts. So... So, because I don't want to smoke detectors, so it's not very popular. But, that's besides the point. The point is, I realized that all three of you are young, resilient, American ladies, and I'm just so proud to know that we have a class president, vice president, and representative from Aces, you know? I didn't make it, but you guys did, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I mean, um, my second was my, uh, thanks in the community for the street access session I had over my marriage. This is again areas that, um, Board One, the working, which are the areas that we were focused on. So if you look at the, I got it on my page, the goals are the same, keeping four year a year. Um, I know the board's going to say to your own wells, but these are, these are the areas that we're working on, uh, over, over now it's a three-year period. But, um, the growth in the area of first area, we're going to be looking at, have been looking at a yellow program, English, English early program. So it defines, um, what we're going to be doing in that area, and ways of providing some evidence of how that program's going. Each area has, um, the one that I focus the most, Mike, I mean, is the growth in student learning. There'll be three reports that we'll be giving. I put the dates in there, one of those already established, the twenty-third is a workshop, and then we'll do one on the twenty-sixth, and then we'll do one on the thirty-second, so we're going to get the materials back, the data back. So that's a third one. Uh, family school and community, that's working with a long-range plan, strategic plan that Kevin and, and putting together. Of course, without presentation, I mentioned faculties, this past, was it last week? And then particularly moving in that area, so that's a primary focus, a goal too. Physical responsibility, um, with the transition talking between John and new person, um, things are going to have to kind of evolve. I think luckily, a multi-year budget plan is going to be helpful, because we've had to move some of the things into it, given for changes in categories. So we'll be following, again, the, uh, the three-year multi-year plan. The other thing is the facilities, and I think Rachel will update you with that tonight. That's, uh, is a revelation to me about when they're thinking about going for a referendum. I found out that night, so that's going to be a pretty aggressive, um, goal if it comes to fruition. And, um, professional accountability and organization, um, for two years, we've been looking at ways of planning out our PD work, our professional development. Tuesdays are really important, the full days, also trying to get some time for individual needs of teachers to work to do it. So, and the professional accountability, those things there, and we're going to try to work up a multi-year plan for that, uh, going over the next two years. So, those are my goals. If there are drafts, if there are anything that I've omitted, appreciate some feedback. We very started working on some of these things, a certain board for us to do. Um, TDEC, um, who, TDEC, you want to update, go ahead.
This is hard to lie if you didn't use. So, last week, we had our, uh, first TDEC meeting of the year. And in that meeting, uh, our agenda, we gave an overview of our strategic plan, provided an update for the TDEC committee. Um, we left the meeting, uh, with the expectation that we will try to squeeze in one more meeting just before the board meeting, we get back to the board, uh, with, with the strategic plan that we're asking for approval on. We wanted to have an opportunity to have a TDEC meeting dedicated just for the review of the plan. We also had, uh, representation for A I S on the TDEC meeting, we just so happened to have representation of A I S in the committee, uh, when we provided an update of our high school grant. Uh, we were, we are going to a conference on October eighteenth and nineteenth, which in order to participate in the high school process, we, we have, uh, we need teachers, we need administrators, we need representation of the board, and also representation.
You don't have H O T state.
From the district, no, sorry.
I don't think schools, remember?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. We keep saying hot people, though, it's all the talk.
And so, and so Donna Bosworth from A I S was able to provide that update, um, and give some guidance to TDEC in making us aware of that commitment.
Yes, you're doing a great job.
Okay.
So we've had, we, here's a couple different levels of, um, very few different levels of participation, and we're, it's sort of a progressive grant. Um, and so the more buy-in from stakeholders at various levels, the more it means the district or the school actually is to apply for, um, different levels of funding. And so, with the level of participation that we'll have on the eighteenth and nineteenth, the degree of position to apply for, um, a greater amount to sort of further the training. I'm not sure how far we're going to go down the line, because once you get past this point, it becomes a grant matching situation with the district and so, um, but, um, from, from a building standpoint, from a departmental statement standpoint, um, the grid would be instrumental in helping to build capacity with higher, with higher order thinking skills and using the arts as sort of the vehicle to do that.
And so, for folks who do not know about, um, the high school process, it, it's an opportunity, like, like Carol said, to incorporate the arts. Um, and then the grant, any money's afforded to us from the grant, would allow us, if we would have a facilitator, to come into district and help work with our staff to help them incorporate the arts in different disciplines. Uh, so the staff is excited at A I S about this opportunity, the principals excited about this opportunity, um, and we've certainly, um, demonstrated our commitment with the requests and all the teachers, um, and staff who are willing to go out to participate in professional development. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, we also provided, uh, one of our teachers from the high school, Mike, um, Mike provided an update on NEASK. Uh, NEASK, as Dan had presented last week, last time we had our board meeting, uh, was going to start on Sunday, um, on November seventeenth, and conclude on the twentieth, as part of the, uh, update at TDEC that, that afternoon. Uh, it was also shared that a review from the visiting team, uh, will be prepared, and they will fill out a kind of highlights of the visit, and then a more comprehensive report will follow up a couple months later. So that was also part of something that TDEC talked about. Um, as a follow-up from the conversation we had at our last board meeting, we also talked about the racial imbalance report, um, that impacts more specifically, um, A I S in West Side, so we talked a little bit about that at our TDEC meeting. Um, there were some clarifying questions that were asked at that meeting. Some of those questions were, um, about what does this mean for magnet schools and schools that have a lottery? Clarified at that meeting, I think this was this clarification anyway. Um, we did make a call to the state, um, after our last board meeting, and the question was, are the rules different for magnet schools? The response that we received back from the state is that indeed, um, the rules are different for magnet schools, um, with a caveat. And it's, the rules are different, um, but the state will still run its racial imbalance report, and if there is a school in any district, um, that is twenty-five percent or more racially imbalanced, um, that school would be required to come up with, uh, the school with the magnet school with the lottery, um, that's voluntary, would be required to come up with evidence, um, that there's a voluntary process to get into the school. Uh, so we would still be on the state list, but we'd be required to provide evidence of this process. And so, yes, it's different, um, we're still required to submit some kind of plan if we were to be twenty-five percent or more racially balanced. It would be my recommendation to the board to still come up with a plan to help address those discrepancies. Um, and I think it's just really more about getting out to the community and promoting A I S as a school. Last but not least, we also talked about, uh, the equity policy, and talked about its adoption, and really just updated TDEC about its adoption. It was, um, just reasonably approved by just, by the board, um, and we just provided an update. And with that potentially impact, that can have on professional development, curriculum update too, so.
As long as you're at the P T O that evening, can you also get everything?
Citywide P T O.
Yeah, please.
Sure. Is that the same meeting? So.
Yes, it was. It was also going for that.
So, citywide P T O, um, on Monday evening, we talked about a couple things. The biggest thing, we talked about, uh, representing a super tendency, was an update about enrollment. It was our first citywide P T O meeting of the year, and so we wanted to give the citywide P T O an update, um, on our numbers. We showed what they were, very aware of the five, six hundred students that come across our county at the registration, through registration. I walked them through the impact that it's had on our schools, from registration to our nurse's office, um, to our testers who test E S, E L L students, um, the impact that's had on our schools, our secretaries, our principals, our teachers, um, the number of students in classrooms. Amazingly, uh, all of our staff members, the citywide made it happen, was able to get students in classrooms, schedules in the hands of students for the first day of school. Uh, and we were able, our nurses, in some way, somehow, were able to clear all of these new students to our district, so we can get kids starting school the first day of school. Um, it was, quite frankly, it was a all-hands-on-death, amazing, um, effort by everybody involved to get our schools up and running, and make sure our families didn't have to wait, um, in a way able to access school on the first day. Um, so I provided that update in the meeting. Of course, um, everyone provided their update. We had, uh, quite a few, uh, new parents at citywide P T O, different representations, and I was really great to sit. Um, there was some really good energy, I thought, at the meeting, um, and, uh...
We updated them on the strategic plan?
Yes, there, there was an update, like I had done with TDEC. Provided an update on our strategic plan. There were, uh, there was, uh, some, there were not many comments about the plan, but there were two, um, specifically that resonated with us. Uh, one of them was, uh, they would have liked to have seen more terms like rare throughout the document. And I think that's something, uh, the team and I need to reflect upon that, and make sure everyone sees themselves in the document. Um, secondly, another recommendation was, uh, around talent acquisition. Um, I had explained initially in our, in one of our strategies around talent acquisition, we had had, initially, we had a commitment of, um, as a goal, trying to recruit and select staff that mirrored the population that we served. And I'm talking about the demographics of our community, and that as a district, we had modified that a bit to make sure, although that's still a goal, we aspire to be there, um, but we modified that a bit to make sure our staff that we hire are culturally responsive to embrace the community that we serve. Uh, and one of our parents pushed us and challenged us as a district to say, listen, my, my daughter, it's, you know, I, I think the parent just wanted to remind us how important it is to make sure that staff who are in front of the kids, like, it really does make a difference. And he shared a story talking about his daughter, who, uh, I thought was a great analogy. He talked about his daughter who identified with Wonder Woman, the same way he identified with male superhero characters growing up. Uh, and it reminded us as a board of education, as a district, that this plays an important role in kids' lives, um, coming up in our school district, and to be mindful of that when going out to recruit, because he said that movie still resonates with his young daughter today, and we need to be mindful of that when going out to recruit teachers to be in front of the kids, so.
Just for the board, uh, on the, with the nurses, because there's a lot of, been a lot of, a lot of talk about it in the papers. We permitted students to register, and we hadn't completed all of the testing, so they were admitted into school, particularly to those new students. Secondly, we admitted students if they had appointments for the physicals. Students that were excluded was if they didn't have their immunizations. And that, they were not permitted to have their self. Um, but as it was, they provided a lot of appointments, and we've got our kids in, so it went incredibly well for our nurses. It was a great job this year in particular.
Dr. Festo, one more thing. Uh, citywide P T O did ask us, uh, to announce, uh, meet the candidates night, it's October fifteenth at seven P M, um, at Roy View Middle School, and, um, they had also requested that the district sent on a local call, also inviting families, uh, to the event that night. So we'll be working on both those things.
Last week, they, uh, October second, it was the opioid night that I attended, and that was by invitation of our legislative group, um, we met, uh, over at, um, I think it was the police station or?
No, it's my office.
Oh, right, at Civic area. I don't know, I, I think everybody, it was a catharsis in some respects, this is what's happening. I don't know what the takeaway was, other than we care, I mean, we do something, you were there as well. I think it's good, it's on people's agenda. Uh, there were some stories and families over there, tragedy that had lost, um, some of their siblings, and that, that, that really set the tone that, oh, we've got to be doing something, and something serious. So at least the group was committed, so if we can come up with something legislatively for some support, might be a good timing to get our legislators involved in it, uh, because I think they're ready to do something. They didn't walk away with that doing anything, but talked about the need here. The mayor was there, um, every department was there, uh, along with, um, those, um, support programs, when, when folks are let go of a, a center or, uh, let's say, a treatment center, and they're not supported, there's an organization out there that supports them and allows a lifeline for a, for a period of time, kind of like an A A in some respects, and we need to do more on that. But we didn't talk about our kids, these were adults. Um, and I know we've been working at the hospital, a lot of youngsters, so we need to come around that. But at least it's on everybody's agenda, as a very serious, um, thing for us to deal with. So I thought that was, uh, to our advantage for this year. Now, Rich was there, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I had a totally different feeling. I thought it was a waste. The, there were a bunch of politicians who did nothing. They sat there, they had nothing to offer. The attorney general is there, just touting how much of a lawsuit he was going to propose along twenty-five other states against the different pharmaceutical companies, maybe when he got the money, what they're going to do with it. But, the, the, I think the most prevalent reaction or comment that was made was, the opioid crisis is really out of hand, and the system itself, that the general system, whether it be care or hospitalization is broken, but there's no solution to revisit that or what was being done. You had parents telling heart-wrenching stories about deaths in their families of children and husbands, and complaining that when they called the legislators, that they didn't get any responses or anything. Nobody, Sam was a, not a participant around the table, just a, I guess, call it an invited guest, pardon, an invited public guest. None of them had the brains to ask the superintendent what his feeling was on the subject relative to kids. So, I mean, I really, it was a waste of, to me, an hour and a half, other than politicians getting together and, and telling you who they represented, but nothing really contributing to what they did. And I made that comment that night to whoever was there, as well as Dr. Sal. And I felt when they had a district of twelve thousand kids, and you have a superintendent of schools there, at least they could have asked him what the effect is, or what he's doing, or how education in opioid in the schools may help, or what is aware, what is, is offered, or what, what's, what's offered, or what's available to, to help, you know, this, this program, or get the information out. And nobody even attacked that particular problem, so.
Now that you brought that up, I think it's a good time on the board about what we're arguing. You want to match you, or what you know? Please.
Sure, so I think I had updated, um, the end of last year. We are working, um, with Caffey Dow, so our coordinator of health and nursing services, Dr. Sal, um, several people on my team, as well as Danbury Hospital, and we continue to try to partner better on some, um, early intervention opportunities that we can do for kids. Um, the, uh, the other pieces that we're doing is working with Lisa Morris, state of the city, to, um, try to secure grant funding. We did apply for one, um, in the springtime. Unfortunately, we were not the recipients of that grant, um, so we have sought out some additional, um, uh, grant opportunities. And the purpose of that would be to do a care team model, which the city, um, is currently, uh, utilizing with some of the at-risk adults in the community, and have found a lot of successes. Um, and really what that would do is bring all agencies to the table, of course, with parental consent, to try to see what we could do beyond the schools, um, or in partnership with the schools, I should say, but, but also other community agencies, and bring up individuals in certain circumstances that are going through, and have agencies such as counseling agencies, the Department of Children and Families, um, or other, other organizations that could help to support the family and collaborate with the school, investigating their needs. Um, the purpose of doing this would be to make sure that we have a community care... The purpose of doing this would be to make sure that we have a community care model so that all of our kids can get the support that they need beyond just the hours that they're here with us. We are also looking at revamping some of our curriculum, and you can speak to that probably better than me, on some of the health curriculum, particularly looking at infusing some of the vaping prevention work along with our kids. We've also met with an individual that does a smoking cessation program, and that has really changed from cigarette smoking to vaping products. And we will be bringing that into our flex to work with some of our youth that are interested in educating them and also in seeking some assistance and support with quitting. And so that is something we will begin piloting in November. We're looking into getting with Vicki Carlson, who is our department head of school counselors. We're looking at getting her trained so that she can continue and carry on that program within the district, and we're exploring some different online opportunities that might be positive to add into some of the curriculum for our kids. Do you have any...
No, it's pretty much it. We are looking to, as part of our Title IV grant this year, there's an opportunity to use a little bit of funding for wellness, just to portion it out. So that's how we're getting the money to do some recruiting development. But the vaping component in particular is, you know, we just feel needs to start much earlier. And so we're looking at ways to vertically align what it is, what's appropriate by grade level for elementary, middle school, and high school, and we're also going to be bolstering topics around opiates as well.
If you're, if you're interested, one of the online things is called vapeeducate.com, I believe it is, and that there is a free trial that you can sign up for, so if you're interested in seeing what the, could be a potential learning tool for our students and families, you can check that out.
I have a question, just backtracking to T-DAC update. I'm sorry I wasn't at the meeting, our last meeting. I did watch, and I know there was some discussion regarding the lottery for the magnet schools, and I'm just wondering what the status is. I know that we were exploring, you know, ways to adopt a lottery system that, you know, makes sure that our student population is, is more appropriately represented at magnet schools, so I was just wondering what the status is of...
Let me start with, yeah, I guess, I think the approach there is going to be make sure we flood the communities in, in, pretty solid this year to see if we could get more applications in, in that volunteer program. The conversation around the intro, which is our middle school, is talking about an opt-out type of lottery. And I know Kevin is working with, first of all, we're trying to figure out, can't be done, how we're getting done, pros and cons with, with Dr. Lulanka. You might want to update us, how you feel with that?
So in, in the discussions we've had, we've actually started discussions with Power School. Power School, not managing the lottery, but managing the registration process. This is something that could be helpful with our A.I.S. efforts, and also specifically could be helpful in this, this West Side effort, if we were to go in that kind of direction. We, some of the things that we've talked about, logistically, it would be a tremendous burden to do an opt-out if we continue to use, like right now, we have one person in my office calling families one by one, Mrs. Jones, Mr. and Mrs. Jones, do you want to keep your child at West Side, or do you opt out? Okay, you have been accepted into STEM and, and Global Studies, you're thirty-fifth on Global Studies, you're second on STEM, I don't want STEM, I want Global Studies, you come off the list from STEM, and this goes back and forth for every student that they've applied on both sides. And so if we were to have every student in that lottery, we cannot continue to move forward with a person doing this, because there would just be too many families that we'd have to reach out to. So we were trying to, I think it's time to explore a more efficient way to do registrations anyway, and then we had asked Power School if, because Power School has now purchased the rights to this registration company, I forget what it's formerly known as. And the feedback they've given us was to write out kind of the logistics of everything, what it would look like if we were to move forward in this fashion, and then, because they said they can pretty much retrofit any program we want. So we had to send them what we want, and then they will send back some numbers and kind of walk us through what it would look like if we were to adopt it. So we're in a preliminary discussion right now, but initially, after speaking with the middle school principal, the elementary principal, and then the folks who legitimately are behind the scenes, working with parents, accepting and not accepting, the agreement was we would have to adopt a different way to do this if we were to consider it, because it would just be too much for one person to handle. Right now, we're starting someone to handle at work, but this would be like a whole, all day, all year job, we're doing to that, so...
So some sort of like opt-out lottery would just require just a different way to go...
Yes.
Either resources, more resources being allocated to it, or just a tweaking of the system if that route was...
It's the tweaking of the system. It's, it's, it's our understanding that this is something that can be done where families, similarly to when you e-sign something, families will be encouraged to e-sign yes or no. We will push something out again, families will be encouraged to e-sign yes or no, and then if we don't get a response, we may have to call. But these are some things that we're exploring now with Power School.
Great, thank you very much.
Do you know any school that does an opt-out lottery setup period?
I, I do not, I do not.
So those are the things we've got to look at. I think the board's going to decide, because when we did, we just followed, we did A.I.S. The timing is not very good, actually, talking to Frank. We really need to open up the admitting CEDAC program. I think we talked about November, right? And just for timing wise to get, get that going for our scheduling, so we've got to look at the calendar of whatever we do, what it will come down to a vote decision. And we'll do an analysis of who's out there, I think that's a good question that we have to look at. The other thing I did want to mention to you in, at our facilities meeting, we talked about A.I.S. Just everybody knows, the building belongs to the state, given to Danbury to use. After twenty years, we've gotten to Danbury School. I did find out, that was a question that was asked of me. So one of the proposals you're going to see, I'm going to ask Ryan Bigum, our legislator, he's putting together a draft, met with us, we gave him some ideas about things that we think we need to endorse. It's a short session this year up at Hartford, but you may want to have some language around accelerating the time that you own the building, so he's going to put something together for you to look at, if you can do it or not. But in twenty years, this is the thirteenth year of the building, seven years, we did nothing, the building becomes a Danbury building. So we did get that answer from the State Department. There was one more thing here, Debbie, your question?
Yeah, so...
I didn't like talking about it.
I know. So, her years, my years. So everybody knows that Debbie Warner will be retiring at the end of this month, so parties are being organized. Actually, she, she didn't want a lot of fanfare, so we're going to do a few things for her to celebrate, but we did conduct a search, we had over a hundred and ten applicants for the position, so we did some screening, we interviewed quite a few candidates, and we have selected a replacement. The woman's name is Cara Pompano, and Cara comes to us from Region Fifteen.
Is that where she was at?
It certainly is.
Take someone from there.
She...
In your face.
She's currently serves as the executive assistant to the vice principals at the high school. Prior to that, she has pretty extensive experience as a city clerk and assistant, executive assistant to several mayors of both persuasions, multiple parties, in Manhattan Beach and California, and also in Nagata. So she brings a different, a bit of different experience to us. So in addition to having a school and district education secretarial piece, she's also got the municipality piece as well. So we had her meet some of the folks on all of our teams that she would be working with, and she was, she was very highly regarded, and I think we're really excited to bring her on board. She's going to start on the twenty-third of October, and she'll have a bit of a transition time with Debbie, and then we will, we will give Debbie her party gift, so...
Thank you. Moving on to discussion enrollment, you want to talk about that?
Yeah. You've had the October one enrollment. Those are numbers we have to the fifteenth of the month to reconcile it, right? Even though that's a kind of bookmark, there's, there's changes that are going on, but we have up to the fifteenth. It does make a difference in terms of ECS money, of course, to make sure that we capture the right numbers. So if you look at the report there, the bottom line, there's four hundred and thirty-five new students in the district, and you can see that currently, it's a little bit more, my understanding, with the pre-K, and we did reach out to the State Department to get an accurate number on outplacement, students that are, that were paying for their outplacement. We're about twelve thousand, just about twelve thousand, I think is what you don't want to see. But you look at the high school there, two hundred and sixteen students, is where we've been putting overloads of teachers in. You have the middle school, a hundred and thirty-nine, primarily over at Rogers. We're going to look at Rogers Park. When Rogers Park programs put together, Broadview had, always had a hundred and fifty, two hundred students more, so it became the bilingual center and students in the district. We're going to look at redistributing, because the way that students are coming into town, we probably have a shared program at each school, so they have a level, sum of it all. West Side is West Side, that's by lottery, so that we, we have their new students because we added a grade level, not necessarily new to the district. So that's why that's there. But overall, four hundred and thirty-five students. I took a peek at the Malone, Malone and McBroom, they had for us about eleven hundred and fifty, thirty-two, so we're about four hundred and twelve pupils over what they had anticipated we would have at the same time this year, and we know it's primarily the secondary. Today, we met with a developer, that's the work group developer, so there's a real interest in developers in the West Side, they're using a lot of the studies that we had in terms of impact. I thought they were pretty receptive today. The formula that they're using, they call it Ruckus formula, which, you know, it depends on, it's, it's pretty, it's on a calculus basis, but it doesn't look at what's really happening. This group came in, and they wanted to know about the housing developments, where the kids are coming from, to go out and look at them, and not only take what Ruckus was putting together. Apparently, they're going to be doing a proposal that's going to show up at the city council for approval. And they said if it goes through, how many units was it, like four hundred and fifty, something like that?
Yeah. These are, this has to do with the matrix area.
Yes.
And they're, what they said was they were predominantly studio and one-bedroom apartments, so they're looking at comparables to try to determine what they might estimate the enrollment to come out of a, of a project like that. I want to say it was maybe eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two bedroom, but the rest three hundred and something were studio and one-bedroom apartments.
Yeah.
So I, I think, you know, the, what, the, the thing that I took away from the meeting was that they're eager to look at the same numbers that you're looking at, so that when you get the information from along, they're going to come and listen to those numbers because they want to hear what you're hearing, basically, as they're trying to make their estimates.
So, again, by the fifteenth, we'll be reconciling these numbers, and they'll, they'll be moving up.
Can you provide this with an update?
Well, when we, what's going to happen on November, when is that date?
The eighth.
That's election day.
November sixth?
Yeah, November sixth. The company we hired to do, they're going to have all of the enrollment, so they've hooked up with Cara, and she's feeding them all that data, so we'll have it in one place. They'll have it broken down, they'll have it broken down from what part of the city you're all coming from as well, so we have a good, pretty well aware, it's been saturated, so we'll have that information. And every month, we'll get one of these with the update, obviously. Anybody else want to add to your own, in terms of their numbers, any impact you want to add? If we get some flavor.
And I can add, of the newly enrolled students, we welcomed sixty-five brand new special education students, and we had an additional four or five that were not identified but had displayed a significant level of need that we diagnostically placed, which means we kind of put a trial placement in place initially. These were students that presented with severe cognitive disabilities or physical limitations, most of whom are moving to us from outside the country where they do not formally identify or evaluate students for services. So in the special ed department, we have certainly, you know, welcomed many new students, and some of those students really required some intense programming, one-on-one tutors, we've had an out-of-district placement, things of that nature, so certainly, you know, we are working out some of those unanticipated things. We have looked at some of our related services. The board has been extremely supportive of bringing in some additional SLPs, and that has been beneficial. We did also increase our PTs, and we're looking carefully at our OTs, so physical and occupational therapists, because many of these students have required those services.
Cara, any comments about the pressure of kids in terms of students?
What about the ELL?
About fifty-one percent of students have qualified for ELL services, about sixty-eight percent of them are in Spine, or fifty-one percent of them didn't qualify for, for ELL services, and then sixty-five students, especially. So, you know, I think what I was trying to, the committee with the board last year, last meeting, we had, you always have a neck and flow, kids leave, a number of kids have left, students have come back, delta's four hundred, but the students that we're receiving are pretty needy, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we went back to the town for the, for the special allocation. I talked to Norwalk, just take Danbury out and put Norwalk, they had the same experience, they're about the same amount of numbers, and he, and they've gone back for a special appropriation, about one point four million dollars. So they experienced the same thing we did this year, unanticipated, same, same situation. So we talked about with our legislator, for the board to come up with some kind of an idea in the formula to deal with that kind of unexpected impact, and maybe there's a way of, maybe it won't happen next year, but it happens again to help the district, to add on. Students that qualify for, if all of these students, it's based on October one, I don't know when they look at the allocation of ECS money, it's about eleven thousand dollars a student, so they're about, these students, if they qualify for ELL, fifty-one percent, and free and produce lunch, they'll receive five thousand dollars each more per student they will allocate to us. That was a result of the indexing that they did a few years ago. And Malloy had it in, and the current governor, Lamont, has accepted that. So, you know, next year, when they look at that, if that is present, then those youngsters will bring more resources. Our goal is to make sure we get those resources in this school, because we're going to need them, there's no doubt.
Because we're sure to have the youngsters.
Because we're going to have the kids. We didn't have them when we put this together last December, remember? Now they're here, and if we get an allocation, okay, great, but, you know, we're going to have to deal with it, so that's, that's exactly right. And Mark said something at the meeting, you can, and he talked to the governor, and I anticipate one, you can mention that later, so I don't know if he was referring to that or just over and above.
Yeah, I think he, he's met with him several times and just ensured that we are getting our due, hopefully.
There's sixty-five additional children, called A for special ed, called A principally one-aerial, elementary, middle, or is it spread?
Very spread.
Spread.
Thank you. So we're up to board reports, so I'll just update on the 2020 then, the 2020 task force that met last week, or earlier this week, Tuesday, yes. These are the minutes, you want to... The task force met on Tuesday, the mayor, council, board members, Rich and I, and Kate was there, Dr. Sal, Mr. Walston, am I missing anyone?
Kate was there.
Yeah. PTO members, parents, the mayor talked about short and long-term solutions, talked about the new enrollment study that will be done, the plan for the peak year over a ten-year period, depending on the new study. The plan will be continually updated as a long-term process. The mayor had met with governor several times, who leans toward creative and regional solutions. He talked about moving the adult ed to expand region endeavor, and a pre-K center to free up classrooms in the elementary schools. And he called it an aggressive, robust plan with potential ballot vote in March. And the next meeting is November sixth at four-thirty here at Viverbrook.
What I liked, what he said was, break some water down the road, and if we have the rent that could be part of precision, because as you know, rent comes out of our operational line, so it would be good if they want to carry that cost. Good to hear. Good to hear.
And Kevin took most of my updates. I, no, just, I'm attending the, the higher order of thinking, two-day training, AIS was very excited, and they appreciate your presence very much, so thank you for coming. It is exciting when teachers can pick their own professional development, and it's a cross-curriculum kind of approach, so hoping to multitask with that. There is an equity symposium on Saturday, October nineteenth, just for the board to know, at Goodwin College in East Hartford, from nine to three-thirty. That's for any individual here or in the public looking to understand or promote equity in their community, and ties along nicely with our strategic plan. I'm not able to go, but, because I'll be at the cop training. There's a CAE board chair roundtable on October twenty-third, thank you, Rich, Rich and I are going to that, nine to eleven, it's ten, ten dollars to register, and that's at the CAE office in Wethersfield. And then lastly, I went to the Mix It Up Lunch and Community Helpers Day today at AIS, they always do a fabulous job, that's Mrs. LaBassar, the social worker, and Mr. Crandall with the fire and police department, it was great for the kids, very excited to have some visitors there at lunchtime. So that's it for me, are there any other updates from board members?
Just for the policy committee, another thrilling meeting, we finally got through the bylaws with all our recommendations, they're gonna get shipped over to CAE, they're gonna clean things up, send them back down to the board, they should be on for first reading at our first meeting in November before it being, then hopefully adopted by the board.
Anybody else? Moving on, to, we have an executive session, I'll entertain a motion.
I know that board of education can convene an executive session for a purpose of discussion negotiation with any eight, DHA, and ten to local union, number six seventy-seven custodian with possible action in public session.
Motion has been muted, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Katrina. Any discussion? No, we don't discuss that. All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? No, we're in a pretty good session.